Let her rip.
Huh?
Let her rip.
Welcome to tonight, Wednesday, March 22, 2018, Leiria's Board of Education School Board meeting. Madam Treasurer, please call the roll.
Mr. Brubaker.
Here.
Ms. Karstoffen.
Here.
Mr. Bax.
Here.
Mr. Elick.
Here.
And Mr. Gebhardt.
Here.
Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
My pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Since we have a lot of folks here tonight, a quick introduction. To my far right is Board Member Jim Bax. To my direct right is Board Member Greg Elick. I am Board President Kevin Brubaker. To my left is Board Vice President Annie Karstoffen. To her left is Board Member Mike Gebhardt. Her left is our Superintendent Dr. Jama. And to his left is our Treasurer Joy Klickinger. We do have a board presentation tonight. The design team consultants are going to give a short 10 to 12-minute presentation to the Board as well as for the community out there on the things that were discussed on Saturday that's led to the multitudes that are here today to kind of give us an update and share that information with us. Mr. Rigda, if you'll bring your team up.
Good evening, Board members, and good evening to the public and staff. Thank you for coming tonight. And all of the years, and that would be about 40, that I've spent in Leiria, every one of those 40 years, I could see the passion of our community for the education of our children. So, thank you for coming tonight and getting involved in such an important project is what we're embarking upon. Our goal tonight, as we sit here, would be to bring the folks behind us up to date and to remind you, because a lot of information was thrown to you over the weekend, a lot of facts and figures, and what we've tried to do now is just boil it down to a few basics of how did we get here, what was our goal, what was the main focus, and what focus have we maintained, and where, obviously, where do we go from here. Next to me is Mr. Bill Prentisol from the Ohio Facilities Commission, and he is the Senior Planning Manager. This is the gentleman that worked with us even on the high school many years ago now, over 10 years ago. He made the basement of the Washington Building happen. When the Facilities Commission said that it was unusable for student space, he came up with a formula and a way for us to do that. So, he makes things happen, and we've had a great, close relationship with him ever since then. On the end here is AECOM, part of our AGS service for construction. He's the project manager, and his name is Mr. David Stahl. He'll be giving very specifics about what we've gone through, and Mr. Prentisol will be talking about what he did after we made a request to him in terms of coming up to the solution, or a possible solution, that you heard on Saturday. About 10 years ago, a little more than 10 years ago, they were the best of times. If you recall, there was a little bit of a problem in the economy in 2008 and '09. We passed this in '07, and you didn't have that boon of opportunity that you have now. People were looking for work, and we got the best possible prices we could at the high school. I believe we really made out on that. And ironically, if that was the far extreme of better prices, we are now in a situation of probably the worst prices that we've seen. In 2016, when we passed the bond issue, there was a billion dollars of school bond issues passed. There was nothing like that when we built the high school. And last year, in 2017, another 700 million. That's a lot of work hitting an area all at once, combined with three hurricanes and the other kinds of problems where an entire Puerto Rico having to be totally rebuilt, that put a lot of pressure on materials, that put a lot of pressure on supplies, a lot of pressure on labor, and as we know, supply and demand usually means prices go way up. All kinds of elements leading to sort of a perfect storm. We began the project in a co-funded fashion with the state. We went to the bond issue. In 2015, because we passed it in 2016, the numbers that occurred then were used during the formula development for how much money the state would be able to give us. And we had our bond issue money, and the two combined, we had a current master plan budget of $124.6 million. Unfortunately, we no sooner got underway than things started to come our way that weren't positive. They're going to be good in the long run, they're going to be good for kids in the long run, but this whole storm shelter that came out of the law, it went into effect in November, added $650,000 unexpectedly to our budget. And that was just the first of things to come. Since September, I've been notifying the Board of what we call value engineering, which simply means cutting, and there was a tremendous amount of cutting that took place. Our first round in schematic design, and that's kind of your draft stage, the prices were so high, they came to about $10 million over our 124.6. Through value engineering over a two-month period, we were able to eliminate that shortfall by cutting things out in the building that Mr. Stahl's going to talk about here in a minute. We got down to where we thought we were balanced, three schools that were large, two smaller schools. We were closer to being on budget. We cut out $10 million, but we couldn't cut anymore, because if we're going to do student-centered learning, these new buildings are not going to look like the buildings that we know today. They have movable walls, garage-type doors, glass walls, open areas, lavatories, all kinds of different things that are actually more expensive now than when we used to build a conventional building. But remember, the budget was developed in 2015. Now it's 2018, and this perfect storm is happening. We've had about a 2% gain for about the eight or 10 years since we built the high school until 2017, and now it's shooting up. If we were to graph it, it goes right off the chart. So, all of that comes into play. We had design development was our next step, and in design development, that's where you can't really build the building yet. It's not the actual architectural blueprints to build, but it is enough to see what it's going to cost. And we thought, after cutting $10 million, and if we use that as a prototype, then the other three schools wouldn't have that problem. So, on February 28, we got an email from Mr. Stahl, and it was not a good email. It was one of those scary kinds of emails that says, "Come prepared to tomorrow's court team meeting. We've got another problem." And what we heard there was that at Northwood and Ely alone, we were $3.2 million in the red again, that the prices were even worse than they thought back in September through November, when we made the first corrections. When they started talking to the subcontractors and their consultants, the numbers went up again. If we extrapolated the $3.2 million, which represented 40% of the project, that goes up to $7 million by the time you build three schools that are large and two that are small. The state has made their commitment, and it cannot go any higher, and that left us $7 million short at that point.
Mr. Rigda.
Yes.
Just so we're clear, 3.2 million shortfall.
Yes.
And that's after you've already-
After the $10 million.
After you've already cut.
Right. After the $10 million, and leaving only what we thought was absolutely necessary from what the teachers told us they needed in order to do the job properly. We were still 3.2. There's nothing left to cut at that point unless you start tearing apart the student-centered learning, which was what we promised the public. That was our promise. We're going to do this in a different way. And the state ironically led the way with that, running a three-day visioning session where our teachers came in in the summer to learn how to teach like that. So, if you didn't do anything at all, you're $7 million in the hole. We called a timeout. We asked Mr. Prentisol to go back, and we asked him to see what he could do, and what would it take to get us back on budget, and we'll talk about that in a minute. But you might wonder, how do you cut $10 million? So, I'd like to have Mr. Stahl talk about what did we do to get there.
Thanks, Paul. It's important to note that when we go through this process, we come to the district with just about every option, and some of them are pleasurable and can be taken, and some of them can. So, we brought over between the two schools 127 different options and ideas to save money, and about over 80% of them were accepted. But there was a good quarter of them that, roughly a fifth of them, that were not taken because they were deemed to be against the vision that the school district had, or things that were not smart choices. So, some of the examples that we've done, and I'm just going to, there's, you know, obviously with 127, I'm not going to read them all, but big-ticket items are looking at where we have heavy-duty asphalt. You know, we have a lot of parking lot and drive areas, and in some cases, we just had a little bit heavier-duty type parking surfaces, so we were able to change that to a lighter duty. That's an example. Some of the exterior trim had stone and specialty banding and accent tips. We changed that to a brick-type piece using different ways of tilting the brick to give the same effect, but using a much less expensive material. There were some sun shading devices on the outside of the building, which are a lead-type piece, but we felt it would not impact the lead silver certification that is required by the state. And then there's a lot of other things that you don't see behind the walls, types of wiring, types of methods of feeding mechanical equipment, feeders and panels, data wiring, telephone wiring. There were some material changes in those that do not affect the performance and still give the high quality, that we are able to reduce or change and save a lot of money. And then another item that we did, we worked with Brian from the technology group to change some of the ways the district did technology that they're doing them now, that actually saved quite a bit of money through their purchasing efforts and some ideas that they've had. So, those are just a couple of ideas of what we've done to save all that money, and it's quite extensive.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Stahl. Now, what we did then, when we called that timeout, and Mr. Prentisol was at the meeting, and he does drive in for those meetings along with, and I should say, Ms. Tracy June is here, and she's our project manager assigned to us, I'm sorry. I did say that Tracy June was here, and she's our day-to-day project manager, representing the state. By the way, who is paying 67% of the freight here. We're at 1/3r, they're at 2/3r. So, Bill was very understanding, Mr. Prentisol, very understanding of what we were trying to accomplish. Hearing everything that we said, we gave him a rather daunting task, one that I'm sure he's faced with all the time when you look at a budget that's not working. And we said to him, "Can you help us come up with something that meets the needs of these kids in student-centered learning? All of our kids get the best possible program and the best kind of school. What would it look like, and what could we afford it?"
Well, let me start off by saying, I've been doing this with the commission for about 17 years, so a lot of the ideas are sort of drawn from past experience. And so, if you are unable to get a project or a master plan, let's call it that, which represents all five buildings, if you're unable to get the building designed in a way that it's on budget, then you have to start thinking outside the box in terms of maybe the plan can change, the overall plan can change, rather than trying to change the components of the plan. So, I've had experience with other districts where we were unable to do that, and one of the ideas that has worked is to try to consolidate the plan, that is, have less buildings. And so, I suggested, is there a way that you could consider reducing the number of buildings and making them larger? We know from designing and building over 1,000 buildings that larger buildings are more efficient in terms of cost per square foot, and Dave, I'm sure, would verify that, as well as their architect. Smaller buildings are harder to bring on budget. They're more challenging just because of the efficiencies of the size. So, we know from experience that larger buildings are easier to build on budget. So, the suggestion that I came up was to consider, to ask the Board to consider, is that something that you would be open to do? And he said, "Well, let's at least look at it." So, what I did is I went back to the office and modeled that plan, and the plan, when you do that, does save a lot of money. Now, when I say save a money, what it's doing is it's reducing the budget, which sounds counterproductive, because if you're short on money, why would you reduce the budget? Well, because if you reduce the budget, it reduces the district, in this case, Leiria City Schools' local share requirement. As Paul mentioned, every dollar we spend, 1/3r of that is obligated to be paid for by the district, and 2/3r of it is by the state. So, if we, every dollar we reduce, it frees up 1/3r of that dollar that is no longer obligated to the project. So, when we're modeling these things, if we reduce the budget, if we can come up with a plan that's significantly less costly, that allows money to be pulled out, that can be spent to help cover the costs of these overruns that we're seeing. And then the second thing is that the larger buildings then are going to be easier to bring in on budget, which means the overages are going to be less, so you have more money to spend on less overages. And then the other thing that we need to think about is this two-phase, because currently this thing is set up in two phases. And quite frankly, we're worried and should be worried about how costs are going to continue to change. I mean, we know what's going on right now, but we don't know what's going to happen a year from now, two years, three years from now. Could get better, could get worse. So, if there's a way to make this happen in one phase, then we have a better chance of understanding what we're getting into. So, less buildings gives us a better chance to do it in one phase rather than two. So, that was the reason we made that suggestion, and it's simply right now an idea that is being considered. And there are a lot of ramifications that affect schedule, affect design and design fees, and, you know. So, right now, what we're trying to do is generate ideas and test those ideas and see which ones work and which ones don't work. But one thing we do know for sure is reducing the number of buildings and making them larger is going in the right direction.
That reduction resulted in our ability to recapture $3.2 million that we would have committed to the additional building. So, that 3.2 can go into trying to hedge against this inflationary beast that we're up against. So, I hope that summarizes things and brings you up to speed and re-clarifies or possibly clarifies what we talked about on Saturday. If there's any questions we can entertain, we'll try to answer them.
I heard something about $200, or $202 a square foot for the bigger buildings.
For the bigger.
And what was the cost of the smaller ones, 200?
238.
238.
So, those are the values from our estimates, our latest estimate, to kind of, it was a guide to give you a comparison, to show you that bigger buildings are less, cost less per square foot.
And you mentioned something about the storm shelters. I don't know if everybody knows what the storm shelters are, and you said it was-
I can-
Our portion is 650,000?
Yeah.
Yeah, and which is 1/3, so if, you know, it's 1/3 of what we expect to cost that. Now, that is, we get that, ask that question a lot, is, you know, where did this come from? Didn't come from the School Facilities Commission. It came from the Board of Building Standards, which is the ones that set the Ohio Building Code. And as of November 1, any project that is submitting for a building permit, starting November 1 of last year, is required to put these storm shelters in. And basically what that is, is it's taking a part of the building. It's not creating a special place that's just for a storm shelter. It's just taking a part of the school that you would be designing as a school, whether it's a classroom wing, or gymnasium, or some portion of it, and constructing it in a fashion that would make it to be able to withstand a tornado. I mean, that's the simplest way, so that in a drill, instead of going to a refuge area, which is typically what you have now, and there's really, it's sort of what folks think are the safest place in the building, but there's really no guarantee the kids would survive a direct hit in there. This is designed for, to get everybody in the building, all occupants of the building, teachers, staff, everyone, in the building, in that section of it. And then if a storm came, it would literally, in extreme case, the entire building would go away, and that would remain. And that's how it's designed. And all schools, whether they're state-funded or whether they're not state-funded, are required to have those.
And Bill, would that be considered, then, an unfunded mandate in this case?
Yeah, I've been asked that. I mean, it sort of is. I mean, we're funding our share. The problem is, is districts that got caught where they already went to the ballot and raised their funds, and then it happened. Those are the ones, and you're one of them, that's in this funny situation, because all the districts we're working with now that we're planning, they have time to adequately react to it and raise their share of it. It's built into the price of the building now, so.
The second question. Are there other districts in the northern half of the state facing the same issues? I mean, can you give me a feel for, is it two, or is it 20?
It's pretty much every district I'm working with right now. And of course, everyone's in a different, you know, different phase of design, but, you know, I'm working with, in fact, working on, you know, some projects with some of the folks in the room, and there is an, and let's put it this way, there aren't any of them right now that we're not facing a challenge like this. Some of them are a little further along and have already bid. Some of them are, you know, in the design stages, but everybody's going to face this, and everyone's going to have to solve it depending on the circumstances that they have and the options that they have. Everybody's going to have different options, so. But it's a reality. We saw, we all knew it was coming. The problem is, we didn't know what the magnitude is. You know, this whole thing on the tariffs on the steel, we believe, I don't know whether anybody's got proof yet, but we certainly believe that is impacting steel prices, because we just bid, for example, I bid a steel package over at Towage, and it dumbfounded us when we got the prices. I mean, we're all looking at each other. I've never seen anything be that far off.
So, that's completely, that's completely an anticipatory-type-
Yeah, I don't know how you do it.
... situation, because it can't possibly have hit the supply chain at this point.
No.
I mean, the actual increases.
Right, right.
Yeah.
I have one quick question. It can be yes or no before we move on to the public portion. My understanding is it's never been done or never been asked for, but has the Facilities Commission looked into, since all these districts are having these issues, looked into additional funding?
Our current policy is the budget is the budget. You know, and Dave will tell you, and the other designers and folks in the room that work with us know that that's a fact. The reality is, at some point, you know, something's going to have to give. We've been able to manage that protocol for a number of years. As Paul said, you know, the market's been really good for the last 10 years, almost. In fact, it's been better than good. It's been, you know, it's really been good. So, we, like, again, we all knew that as we were coming out of that recession, at some point, something's going to change. So, you know, I can't sit here and say it's gonna, but at some point, something's going to have to give.
I have a question for you also. I know that you said that the storm shelter as of November is a new addition, but you spoke of all your years of experience. In regards to the square footage, and this is to you, David, was that foreseen, or is this something new that you're seeing from the smaller buildings to the large building? Or was that not foreseen going into the project? That the cost would differ from the small buildings to the large buildings?
Well, the, there's a formula that the master planners use from the state that has different values. Smaller, the smaller schools do have larger budget values, so when you bid, it's built into the budget. But we, as soon as last November, we bid Willoughby Eastlake and the elementary school there, which was about the same size as the one here, ended up, when we bid it, about 7% over the budget value. So, it is something that we know and are constantly telling clients that we foresee.
Okay.
So, but the answer, let me expand on that a little bit. The answer is yes. We do anticipate smaller buildings to be bigger, and as Dave said, our, if you look at our, you can go onto our website, and you can look at, under the design manual, there's a place where you can look up the standard budgets for different-sized buildings, and if you go down to a small building, you'll see there's a big jump. But what we're saying is, despite the fact that we budgeted more for those small buildings, we're still getting, we're still getting hit. So, but what we do know is, the bigger we build them, the better the chance we have of making them come in on budget. And I think your estimating right now is proving that out, is that his numbers are showing that we're closer to being on budget on the large buildings than we are on the small. And that doesn't surprise me. That's the way, that's the way it is. We just built, or it's there, I shouldn't say we just built, we're in, under construction in a little town of Belleville down by Mansfield, of two really small schools. We got those things to be on budget, but man, did we have to work hard. And now, they were bid, you know, before, I think right before this, but even then, we really, really, really struggled. And I usually counsel districts, any district that wants to build a really small school, I caution them, you know, "You can do it, but you better understand it's going to be a challenge, and you should have some extra money on hand in case you're not able to do what you think you can do."
So, just to review the numbers here, we're looking at two buildings, 2/5 of the way through. We cut 10 million, we're 3.3 over budget. So, if we extrapolate that out to five buildings, we're going to have to cut another 15 million and be about 7 million over budget. Is that kind of where we're looking at, if we continue on this road?
It would be seven total, not another 15.
We wouldn't have to do any more cuts?
We're three now at 40%.
Okay. But didn't we cut 10 to get to that?
Yes.
Okay. Okay.
We cut the 10. This gets complicated the deeper we go, but here we go. We cut the 10 and use that as a template.
Oh, okay.
Sorry, architects, they don't like that word. They do a POR for each school.
So, we're going to use that as a template?
That's right, and don't go back there.
Okay.
When we hit the 10, anything new doesn't have anything we already took out, so you don't have to do it three times.
Okay, good.
There's not going to, sorry, staff that's behind me too, I feel a little heat on my neck. They will get an opportunity on layout within, side of the building, but all of that two months of work and $10 million, you're not going to go back and start from scratch again. You're just going to frustrate yourself. It gets very tense in the room. People don't want to do what's being suggested. These poor guys got to come in with sharp knives and axes, and we're trying to be professional about it.
We're just trying to look for a number-
Idea after idea go by.
For everybody that's there.
$7 million without any additional inflation. I don't know how realistic that is, and I don't know if you missed Bill's point. The way we're doing it now, a little bit of Eastern Heights, and then you tear it down, a little more of Eastern Heights, and then get around to this school, then get around to that school. We have no reason to believe that it should stay at seven, but they didn't want to play a game with you and throw a number out. So, if nothing changes, it's $7 million more to do nothing. It's so unrealistic to think if we didn't do anything else, in three years from now, it's the same price as today, but that's your seven solid, seven solid. The only thing that would change, it would have to go away. The whole problem would have to go away, but how could it go away with a billion point seven in the last two years? That stuff's just hitting now. It's going to go on for the next two or three years, and we don't know what's going to pass this year.
Okay. Thank you, gentlemen. Appreciate your help.
You're welcome.
Thanks, guys.
Thank you for asking. Thank you.
The next portion of our meeting, the School Board encourages and appreciates citizen interest in meetings of the Board of Education. Normally, the Board will meet twice during the month, and will make accommodations to allow for public participation. Person wishing to address the Board for up to five minutes may place their name on the sign-in sheet indicating the topic by which they wish to address the Board. So, this evening, we've got quite a few, and I would ask that the Treasurer will be running a timer. I would ask, for the sake of everybody having the opportunity to have their time, to keep to that five minutes for us, please. And we'll just start on the list here. There's many different topics, and the first one is Ms. Shaleen Mudd, talking about bullying and tabled issue. Ms. Mudd? If you could come up here, please. Thank you.
Good evening, guys.
Hello.
Have you had said, "I'm Shaleen Mudd. This is my son, London Mudd." There are two issues that I would like to talk about. Can you guys hear me? I'm kind of loud, so I don't want to be too loud. Okay, there's two issues I'd like to talk about, and one, because we were just on topic, I'll stick with topic for just a second. I have a question, and you can answer it later on. and you can answer it later on, so I don't dig into the five minutes and everybody else's time. The question I have is, they were just speaking about the amount that it was going to cost for a larger building versus smaller buildings. My question is, if you're buying in bulk, and we know that we're spending the same money, and ultimately, we're going in the same square footage approximately, if we go in smaller buildings, or whether we go all into one building, why is it that we have to pay more because of where we're going to locate it versus the fact that we're going in bulk with all square footage? So, that's my first question. Moving on to the issue that I know that's going to be brought up soon, with the school issue with Franklin. I do support that. My son and both my daughters, at any given point, were students of Franklin. And I know that Franklin has made great strides. There's a lot of great programs that have been brought in, and it's in an area where there's a lot of impoverishment. And the reality is, is that if you take that away from the families that are there, you're going to cause a major hardship for those families and those students. And I feel like that would be something that would be best looked over again before really filing a final decision on that. Now, the main point that I came for, my son has been bullied for the last four and a half years at his school. I have no idea how he slipped through the cracks. I have no idea where, I should say, fault lies. But, the fact is, is it is a reality. It has happened. My son's had four concussions in the last four months. He has had to be subjected to severe slander, very disrespectful words. It started off with verbal abuse, and then resulted, starting around November of this year, ended up with physical abuse, resulting in my son not either wanting to go to school, but also feeling afraid of a lot of other elements at the school. My son's grades went from A's, and doing well and being happy to go to school, down to D's and F's, and me having to find new ways to get him to want to go to school. That is an issue that is not only happening in my son's school, but sadly, across the district. And as we've seen recently, there was another incident that happened, which, as I've read in the media, and as I've discussed with other people in the administration, was dealt with, but there was an incident with a threat at the Westwood Junior High School. Bullying has got to stop across our district, and not just addressing my son's issue and my son, because he is obviously my first priority and why I'm here. But, I care about the rest of these children as well. And these children have to be represented, and they have to be put in a position to go to school, to learn, to feel safe, and to actually be able to want to learn and be able to learn. And they can't do that if they're afraid. They can't do that if they can't defend themselves, and then they're not being defended. You know, the kids are in the school for seven and a half hours. They're under the care of the School Board, and under the care of the School Principal, and the teachers in the facility. I'm not saying that everyone is at fault, or everyone is wrong, but it's an issue that has to be addressed. And it's an issue that has to stop today. It cannot go on. We cannot have one more loss of child with injury, or God forbid, that an incident happens and we become part of the national news that now we have a school shooting. It cannot happen. So, as not only a mother, but a concerned parent and a concerned citizen, you know, it's got to be addressed. Now, I know that I have spoke with a few people, and I'll give you a chance to have a rebuttal to that, if you feel so, that you'd like to.
Dr. Jarmo?
Thank you.
I know you spoke to
Absolutely. Thank you, Ms. Mudd, for your information presented to the Board tonight. Thank you. You and I have spoke, we've spoken for quite some time, and over the last couple of years, actually. And we have built a good relationship, and I think it's an honest relationship. And I hear you tonight. I hear that you are addressing the Board and the community about bullying, specifically in certain buildings with reference to your child. And as a district, we absolutely take bullying very seriously. We take hazing very seriously. And if those situations, as you had mentioned tonight, when those situations occurred, we apologize for those. We will work together as an administrative team to constantly look at what we're doing, to constantly improve with what we're doing. And, again, you brought this information to us earlier, and it will, we will look into it, and it will be addressed.
And thank you for bringing this to our attention. It's definitely, bullying is something that's not tolerated at all. It's so important to have parents like you that actually speak up about these things. You should be commended.
I appreciate that. I do want to add one piece to that. And all the parents that I have talked to, and all the parents I stand here representing, as I hope they all get a chance to speak if they choose to. But, as I stand here representing these parents, and I've spoke with quite a few, I've noticed, and this is probably going to sound kind of biased, but it's a fact, I've noticed of all the parents and the kids that I have had on my Facebook page, or in my inbox, or had face-to-face conversation with, the school that had the least bullying was Franklin. And I think that's because they have mentoring programs there. They have things that help these kids feel inspired to want to keep doing better and growing and moving forward. And so, in saying that, I also want to put that in as an added inspiration to look into what they're doing, because it's working, and look into not closing that school, because it's an asset for the community, for the families, but most importantly, for the children, which is why we're all here, right?
Thank you, Ms. Mudd. We appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I will say, folks, that I know there's going to be questions that are going to be brought to the Board, and we're going to take those questions down. And again, to keep everybody moving and having the opportunity, particularly referencing the schools, we're going to, we'll take those information down. We have your names, and then we will get that information, not out to just you, but to the public. So, next one up is Mr. Ross Johnson, Schools on the South Side. Mr. Johnson?
Is it two Ross Johnsons?
Well, this
First of all, the name is Roger.
This is Ross Johnson at 1103 East Ave.
Nope.
That would be you. Come on up, Mr. Ross Johnson.
Oh, man, I don't feel so nervous no more. Oh, man. A bunch of questions could be asked. I'm not going to ask a question. I'm a 25-year-old young man, here in Elyria, I'm a resident. I'm also a graduate of Elyria High School. I'm a resident on the South Side of Elyria. I'm a youth football coach on the South Side of Elyria. And what I can say, what I see in the kids of the South Side of Elyria, that they don't have much to hold on to. They don't. They turn to sports, and then they turn to their friends, whatever their friends are doing. So, we got to try to keep these kids doing something positive, as much, as much as we can. I notice a lot of them walk to school, walk back and forth to school. Even when it's three degrees outside and school, what just so happened to not be canceled that day, those kids still get up and they walk to school. These guys at ECOM made this city a promise. They made you guys a promise. They told you that they could build you five schools, and they told you the locations and where they could put those five schools. So, only thing I have for you guys is to make them keep their promise. Please, for the sake of these kids. These kids don't have, they don't have much. They don't have much. And if they find out they're not going to have a school, at the least, a school, you know, I think that's going to be real devastating, not only to the parents, but to the kids. Because like I said, they don't, they don't have much. They barely have, it sucks to say, but they barely have parent involvement. So, they at least need to have that comfort at school, that they get up and walk to. And I can guarantee, it's going to be real hard for them to walk to the east side, or to the north side, or even to the west side. So, just whatever you guys could do. It's a lot of power in this room. It's a lot of money in this room. It's a lot of great ideas in this room. And if we all decided to collaborate and work together, we can make sure these kids have a school on the South Side of Elyria. That's it.
Thank you, Mr. Johnson. The next one up is Marcus Madison, speaking on a new day. And it would be the Marcus Madison on Maple Street. Thank you, Mr. Johnson. The next one up is Marcus Madison, speaking on a new day. And it would be the Marcus Madison on Maple Street.
Forgive me if my voice sounds a little shaky, if my hands shake a little bit, or if a tear falls. To the residents and every single person that's sitting behind me, you should be proud today. I think our kids should be proud today, and they should know that they have some champions in the midst of our community, who have decided to step forward to share their concerns, and their passion, and their hopes for their future. I want to also say, for the record, we, me personally, as well as other individuals, have been meeting with Mr. Jarmo and the schools. And I know that this is a tough decision, and I want to keep that working relationship intact. With that said, today's conversation is about our children, and it is about families living on the South Side of Elyria, and their future. The decisions you guys have to make will echo for generations to come through the streets of a neighborhood that has been working to transform itself into a community of promise. We have made, over the years, investments so that our children can feel safe walking the streets of this neighborhood. We have made sacrifices so that our children know that they are loved walking the streets of this neighborhood. And all of the hard progress we've made has been so that our kids know that they matter. It is hard for me to sit here. In my years of service in City Council, I've anticipated fighting many battles for this neighborhood. I've never thought, in my time of service, that I would be coming before a board trying to fight for our young people. So, I understand that this Board has to make decisions. And I've heard the information shared by the consultants. But, the questions that I have, and the things that I'm not hearing, is what about the progress we've made? Has the state considered the situations of transportation? And what happens to the single mother that's living in Midview Crossings, or in Wilkes Villa, that is doing everything that she can to make ends meet and provide for her young one? How is she going to get her kid to school? What happens if the kid misses the bus? How are they going to learn? What I'm not hearing today is, have the consultants considered the resources that have gone into Franklin Elementary School to wrap services around some of our most vulnerable members living in the city of Elyria? What about the mentoring programs of organizations that have stepped forward to fill a void, to make sure that our kids know that they matter? What about the fact that there's so many young people that are hungry, living in our city, that come to the schools, because they don't know if they're going to find food at home sometimes? And over the summertime, they had the convenience of walking to Franklin Elementary, because they knew that it was in our community, and it was a safe place for them to go? What's going to happen to those services? What's going to happen to the investment that the foundations have made, because they know, in the city of Elyria, in a community of need and challenge, that they wanted to do everything they can to provide these kids a fighting chance to live and move forward? I came in today, and I was greeted with one of my teachers from Franklin Elementary, Joyce Major, who's in the room today. And the only thing I could say was, "Thank you." She shared with me that she taught us how to fight. She shared with us that that's what she wanted us to know, as children growing up in South Elyria, how to fight. So, to the residents here, continue to fight, and we'll fight this fight with you. Thank you.
Thanks, Marcus. Thank you, Mr. Madison. Next up is Stephen Geddis.
Speaking on South Side Schools. Good evening. My name is Stephen Geddis. I am the Vice President of the Ambassador Brothers of Lorain County. I am a concerned resident of Elyria. I'm a parent, a taxpayer, and a homeowner on the South Side of Elyria. I'm here to talk about the ramifications of the revisement of the Master Plan. The center of our community is our school systems. The closing of Hamilton, as well as the proposal that you guys are putting forth to revise the Master Plan, has already affected our community and our schools. And our schools provide our children with safe learning environments, healthy snacks and meals at school, the opportunity for the children to express themselves, positive peer interaction, and provide social and emotional skills that are required for our children to become productive humans in society. One of the biggest hardships for this plan and transportation for schools across town is going to be the time that our children wake up to get to school, and the time that they arrive home. It's going to be an extremely long day for them. What happens in the event that that child misses the bus? There is no alternative transportation that also affects the parents, how they feed their kids. The sanctity and safety of schools are going to be very and dire important to our community. The school handbook says this, "The State of Ohio considers school attendance of such great importance that it has made laws or penalties against parents who do not send their children to school." The general principle of attendance must be that every child attends school every day, that in school, as long as school is in session, unless the child is ill, or has legitimate reasons for being absent. My question for you guys is, will this proposal, will it be able to bring legal action to our parents who can't afford to get their kids to school? Education has been the cornerstone of our community, and we thrive, and we need our K-8 school in our community. When I purchased my home in 2009, I purchased it on the South Side of Elyria, because there was a preschool program, as well as an elementary school in my community. One is already gone, and the other appears to be in jeopardy. So, what do we tell the people who are homeowners, who are afraid that their property value's going to decrease? What do we tell the people who own businesses and those different things, who are going to affect, this decision is going to affect those things? Has our community grown and developed? What do we tell those people who are looking for a place to move to? "Put Elyria on the South Side of Elyria, there's no school, so I don't want to move there." It's going to affect numerous things. There's going to be a lot of chain reactions that come from decisions that you guys make today. Many of our families are forced to stay in the community, because they don't have the resources. So, when we go to other schools, and we bus to other schools, if that's what the plan is going to be, what are you guys going to do about the overcrowding in classrooms? What do you guys do with the behaviors that take place in those overcrowded classrooms? Malcolm X made this quote, "Education is the passport to the future, for tomorrow belongs to those who prepare for it today." We're desperately trying to educate our kids, but we need your assistance in getting that done. The question for me, that I have for you guys, is, how cost-effective is busing our children to other schools in the community? And at what point does that become a bad investment? And we're still not going to have schools after we bus them. So, we have to create a positive solution today, to ensure that our children get the best head start possible in life, and make sure that we help them, further them along to be the best citizens, that Elyria school system can make them to be. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Geddis. Next up will be Ashley Torres, speaking on keeping schools on the South Side. Next up will be Ashley Torres, speaking on keeping schools on the South Side.
So along with the others, I have several thoughts and concerns. I live on the North Side. And when the levy came about, I thought it was amazing that South Elyria would get a new school. I've worked in South Elyria in childcare for 11 years. And I see the struggles, as everyone has said, about the transportation, the poverty, and all that. So my concern is, as a voter, I was promised something and my tax dollars are now not going for what I had assumed was going to happen. And I'm also nervous because I thought I signed the attendance sheet not to speak.[651.16][651.16](Laughter) So, but I just, so, I just hear from my kids and they're, they need what everybody else gets. And living on the North Side and working on the South Side, I see when people are like, "Oh, where do you work?" And I say, "Oh, the South Side." And they're like, "Oh, the South Side." So I was like, "A new school, like, that will bring more things for the community."
Thank you for your attendance.[683.13][683.13](Applause) Brenda Warren, Transformation, Transformative Results of a Community School. Brenda?
I don't know.
And as she comes up, these names on this list are going to start getting harder for me to read. So if I mess something up, please don't hold me accountable.
Well, good evening.
Hello.
As was stated, my name is Brenda Warren. I'm a longtime, 30-plus-year resident of the South Side of Elyria. Much of what has already been spoken, I echo those sentiments. Because I'm very passionate about my community. I'm very passionate about empowering not only our children, but their parents and their grandparents, whomever is interested in being the best that they can be and making certain that we're making available all the resources that we have any knowledge about. Make those available to our folks. When I said transformative, transformation of a community, I was thinking in terms of the transformation process that's already begun at Franklin. Because since my children graduated from that elementary school, I've seen quite a few community organizations go in and provide various kinds of enrichment services. And I work for an organization that happens to be a part of that process. And I see the difference that it makes, not only in the children, but also in their parents. So I'm concerned about how are we going to transform this community from being a productive place where children feel that they have opportunity to become responsible, resourceful citizens, to a place where our children feel that they've been pushed aside, they've been relegated, to being less than considered, less valued, less supported in all of the things that make a person's life rich and make it meaningful. I'm a property owner. I'm concerned about folks wanting to even come to my community if there is no school. Most people, before they decide to move to a community, they look at the standard and the status of the schools. They grade the schools. If I don't have a school in my community, those 40-plus or 50-plus vacant lots that I look at every day or throughout the week are not going to be filled. And people are not going to want to come to my community. So one of the most important draws to help my community to be transformed, to be viable, to be resourceful, to be people who are compassionate, as I am, about the quality of life that we're leaving or we're providing for our children, we need a school. And my question is, what is your remedy? What is your remedy? Policies can be broken. New policies can be enacted. Money can be found if we choose to find it.[883.11][883.11](Applause) I do not want to be labeled as someone who is not willing to do the work that needs to be done for my children to have the same kind of services and opportunities as children in other parts of the community. I voted for the levy for all the children of the city, not just for the South Side children. And I am very offended that my children have been considered to be less than valuable in the sight of the people who are preparing and making these decisions. I have been proactive. We've promoted proactivity because historically, we've been considered to be reactive folks. But we've sat at the table for more than a year and a half. We've entertained forums so that our people could be informed, so that we can be strategic in how we're going to help, how we're going to help the school board to realize the five schools that we were promised. The five schools that we were promised. So please don't insult my intelligence and tell me that this cannot be remedied. It's a matter of whether or not we want to remedy it. It's a matter of what we want to do. I have nothing else to say because Dr. Jama knows, we've had several conversations. I'm very passionate about that. I don't have to have a child in the school system for it to be a part of my heart. The school is the heart of our community. Let's not take a heart out of the community. Thank you very much. Thank you very much.[992.23][992.23](Applause)
Thank you, Ms. Warren. Next up is Kiandra Booker, School on the South Side.
I do actually apologize that I'm reading off my phone to make sure I get all my thoughts out there. My question to you, school board, is what made the decision that the South Side school would be eliminated, when more than half the residents on the 5th Ward voted, and are the reason why this levy passed in 2015? The newspaper quoted, it said nearly 70% of the residents on the 5th Ward. I understand busing sounds like the end solution when it comes to the problem of transportation. But this would be an issue of finances, as well as many have spoken today. As a former student who attended Northwood and lived on the South Side, when they just housed 7th and 8th grades, that was just two schools. Now we're talking about busing more children to different sides of the town. Also, now we're talking about cramming more students than originally planned into a school, even if it's larger, as discussed tonight by the contractors. This would now change the dynamic ratio of students and teachers in the classroom, making it maybe harder for teachers to now perform as well to the students. I do ask the school board to make not a hasty decision, but clearly taking account of everything that has spoken this evening, I also ask that you keep the community, especially the South Side residents, of what's going to happen next. Lastly, there's nothing on the South Side anymore, as the city has removed our local pool, eliminated the interaction of the South Rack. There's no businesses, nothing that attracts to the South Side anymore. And it seems to me that we keep forgetting that Elyria is not just the North, not just the West, and not just the East Side of town. There was a promise to have a school on our South Side, and I hope this school board will honor that.[1103.65][1103.65](Applause)
Thank you, Ms. Booker. Next up is Eric Bowens, Schools.
Greetings to the school board. My name is Eric Bowens. I'm a product of Elyria City Schools. I started off in Roosevelt Elementary. I did go to Franklin Elementary briefly. I attended Elyria High, I attended JVS, and I attended Elyria West, where I graduated. So I'm well-rounded and real-verse. I lived in Elyria my whole life. I did move away at one point. I was away eight years, I was away in Columbus. While I was away, I would come back at least every month. I'd come back and I'd look, especially in the South Side, coming from Columbus, you come off open road, come straight to the South Side, and I'd be so disappointed because it's not what it was when I grew up. When I grew up, it was a lot of mentors around. It was Little League South. It was a south swimming pool. You have Mr. Fitzpatrick and Mr. Logan, you just had role models. You had positive men in the community. So, me being a former athlete here at Elyria West, I reached out to some former athletes in Elyria. And we wanted to start a mentor group. We wanted to get back to the community. So I'm here, a part of Ambassador Brothers, as well as a resident of the South Side currently right now. So I stay on the South Side. I stay on Mussey Avenue. So I see the children walking to school now, and I can only imagine, and coming from Irondale area, even Village, that area, that's my passion, that whole Irondale, where I know Roosevelt's not there anymore. So I already saw Roosevelt gone, I saw Elyria West gone, I saw the whole thing of the community. I'm really passionate about these kids and trying to be positive and trying to come out here and make sure that we make a change. And then when we hear about, there's a talk of the board members and ACOM getting together and it's a proposal, I'm wondering, how does that proposal even be accepted? That's something that in my mind should be just thrown out the door. How can you consider not having a school on the South Side of Elyria where I'm sure Dr. Jama knows it probably needs the most help out of all the areas? And we're working on that, and we've been doing that. And we just want to make sure that opportunity's there for the kids to have somewhere where they can call home, whether it be just to go play in the summertime, or like Marcus said earlier, to have somewhere to eat or after-school activities. So I'm just here to share my concerns and to bring that up. And again, I just don't know, and I know Mr. Wood, that he was my principal, how he would ever accept anything like that. That's all.[1266.51][1266.51](Applause)
Thank you, Mr. Bowens. Next up is Miriam Hamm, speaking on the burdens of state testing.
Good evening.
Hello.
To all of you, to all of you. My name's Miriam Hamm. I'm a retired educator. Mr. Jama, Dr. Jama, I know your brother well, from the Lorain City Schools. And contrary to what the newspaper said, I do not live on the South Side. I live in the Eastern Heights area. But that's okay. I'm here to represent not just the children of the South Side, but all of the children of Elyria. The one thing that I, my big concern is, when I retired from Lorain City Schools, my job was data and accountability. Every test that was offered throughout the district came through my office. Once you remove children and they are displaced elsewhere, a lot of things happen to the report card. You know, all schools are rated on the report card. And when you come from a low socioeconomic area, they look for a low report card, even though our ideas are much bigger than that. So, my concern is, the children on the South Side, or even at the Ely area, when you remove them from the neighborhood, they get to school late, that's a mark against them. That's called tardiness. If they don't get to school at all, that's an absence. And that lowers the report card. And the other thing, if they are at home for whatever reason, that's miseducation. Because they're not being educated, you can't be educated if you're not there. I don't care what you do to a stadium. I don't care what you do with the contractors. The kids cannot learn in a stadium. They can, and contractors are not teachers. So, I'm here to support the teachers of the children, and most of all, I'm here to support the children. And again, there are people here from not just the South Side, but the North Side, the East Side, and the West Side. We care about our children. Thank you.[1445.01][1445.01](Applause)
Thank you, Ms. Hamm. Next up is Jim Sloan, speaking about the schools.
Thank you so much for having this meeting tonight. Thank you for the opportunity to be able to address the school board. I would like to, there's a lot of thoughts going through my mind because there's a lot going on. I'm very proud of Elyria. I graduated from Keystone 100 years ago. But in saying that, in saying that, when this levy was first presented, if you look around, as I looked around the room, I saw some folks here that are retired like I am. And you know what? We had to make a decision. What are we going to give up? What are we going to give up to make sure this school levy passes? I'm going to tell you, I had to give up some things because I voted for that school levy. Because of the promise that was made, that we was going to build some new schools in Elyria. Because, see, I'm proud of Elyria. I'm proud of where I live. And like the other lady said, I live in Eastern Heights. But you know what? I drive down Maple, South Maple, a lot. I used to go down there and talk to Thomas Shores. So you know how long I go back, okay? A man that was very proud of the city of Elyria and the school systems. And one of the things that really bothers me is what a lot of us have given up, or what we're going to give up in the future as this bond issue goes forward. But I was for this bond issue because it was going to build some new schools. The kids were going to have hope. Because in the city of Elyria, we've always been told if we build new schools, you know what? It's going to draw people in. It's going to create jobs. It's going to make the city better. That's very true. That's very true. That's why I went out and I voted for this levy. I asked my neighbors to vote for this levy. Now, in a levy that's going to take this long, I don't think I'll be around to see the end of this levy. But I'm very proud of what's going on, you know, in Elyria. But we need to build these schools. And let me just say this. When you came to us and asked for us to vote for this levy, what did they give you as a price per square foot to build these buildings? Was it $202 for a larger building, or $234 per square foot for a smaller building? Because whatever they gave you is what, absolutely, is what those schools should be built for. That's what they should be built for. Now, in saying that, in saying that, we know that labor goes up. We know that prices go up on materials. Now, in saying that, anytime you bid, you always bid, you always go out and you bid high. You go higher than what you're actually going to have, because of overruns, because of all the different things that can happen. I think we found that out at Elyria High School by being able to keep the Washington Building. So, you know, in saying that, and this passed by about 70%, and as I drive down the South Side, it would be a terrible thing to not have a school on the South Side of Elyria. It'd be a terrible thing not to have the five schools that was promised to us if we voted for this levy. We need those five schools. We don't need three schools. We don't need two schools. We need all five of them because of where they're going to be. And that was a promise that I believe the school board, or at least that was my understanding, if I'm wrong, I'm wrong. But my understanding was, if you vote for this levy, we're going to build five schools. And I think that's a promise that needs to be kept. You know, I guess, one of the things that I would ask the school board to look into, we're talking about Phase 1, Phase 2, Phase 3. What happens if we get to Phase 3 and we can't build three schools? We can only build two. What are you going to come back and tell us then? We can only build two schools. There was a promise made that if you vote for this levy, we're going to build five schools. So we took the school board at its word, and we voted for this levy for five schools. You presented it. And I know you guys personally don't have anything, and when I say the school board, you guys are over this. You didn't do the, you know, you're not the contractors, you didn't submit the bids. So I don't think I'm attacking you personally, because I'm not. But here's the thing. We kept our promise to you. We passed the levy. Not by a little bit, but by a lot. Not by a little bit, but by a lot. And you know, I know most of you probably told the same thing, is that we're to have dreams and we're to have visions. And I have a vision for Elyria. I've had a vision for Elyria for many, many years. That it will return to what it was, and I will be finished, okay? But here's one of the things, it's hard for me, Kevin, as you know, to talk in five minutes. But as we have, if we have our visions and our dreams, we need to fulfill those for the kids of the city of Elyria. Because I'm going to tell you, and I'll close with this, is that every, I don't care if on the North Side, East Side, West Side, South Side, everybody needs to have equal education, equal buildings, equal everything. Nothing needs to change. Everything needs to be there. They need to have the same opportunity. But I'm going to say this. I'm going to say this. If you don't build a building, if you don't build a school building on the South Side, you might as well say, "We're going to cut off part of our city and throw it..." part of our city and throw it away. Because that's what you're doing. That's what you're doing. And my, my example of that is, in October, I had to have rotator cuff surgery. So, guess what? Only about three-quarters of my body was working. That's a terrible thing to have happen. If you cut off the south side of Elyria and not have a school, you're only gonna have three-quarters of your city's gonna be working. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Sloan. Next up is Martice Johnson from Willow Park. He left? Next up is Carol Von Druiska, talking about Franklin Hamilton.
I am totally out of my comfort zone, but I am Carol Von Druiska. I have a unique place in the Franklin family. I was a teacher there for 30 years, I was a parent of two students at Franklin, and my family and I have lived on the south side, and close to Hamilton School, since 1979. First of all, I would like to say thank you to the parents who last night gave me the information that Franklin has continued to care about kids and try their best, that we did forever, that the legacy that we left has continued. And so I would like the Franklin teachers who are here to stand up, because I want to give them a round of applause. And like Kyandra, I brought a script, because otherwise I'm going to forget something important. I'd like to take it from Franklin to the wider south side. Since I retired from teaching, I've learned more about Elyria. The south side is defined by its geography. The Black River is on the east side and the west side, downtown is on the north side, and if you go south, it was farm fields. So we are enclosed. We cannot travel east and west very easily because of the bridges, the bridges over the Black River. We visit downtown to go north, so we keep track of downtown, and if you go south, we have easy access to Route 10 and Route 480. So I think of the south side as Elyria's heart. It's the first neighborhood that was settled in Elyria. Everything else in Elyria has raided it, radiated out from the south side. My house is 110 years old, and it's the young one on the street. It, the south side has always seemed to be the heart, because it detects and has to deal with problems long before those problems move out to the rest of Elyria. It's also the la, seems to be the last area in Elyria to heal. Things get better elsewhere, long before they get better on the south side. We've seen some healing in the recent past, the new high school, the Middle Avenue renovation, and now East Avenue, which is just about to my street. For the health of Elyria, we need the healing to continue. As small businesses disappeared from the area, and I have watched it, Franklin School has become more and more important, as a place providing stability, services, and hope. The residents of the south side are not wealthy, many live in poverty. However, the south side has loyally supported school levies for a very long time. Not having the building promised at Hamilton is a kick in the teeth. Is the school board taking the south side for granted? Will levies be supported in the future? Not building the school will poss, will damage and possibly kill Elyria's heart. The health of the south side seems to predict the health of Elyria. I would like to see if success and pride can start in the south side and spread to other neighborhoods. If we lose the new building, I truly believe that chance will be lost, the south side will be fragmented. Elyria needs to find a way. Schools need to be practical, not palatial, and provide facilities for a solid education. Please think of the Elyria you want to live in. That Elyria has to begin on the south side. I believe your choice needs to involve more than the project cost. The choice will be long-lasting and have far-reaching consequences. Please think carefully, and I am sure that when you signed up to be on the ballot, you never thought you'd be making a decision like this. You have my best wishes.
Thank you, Mrs. Von Druiska. Next up is Pastor Mark Taylor.
My name is Pastor Mark Taylor. I am a resident, longtime resident of Elyria. I live, presently live on the north side, but I grew up on the south side. And growing up, I happened to be part of two school transitions. First of all, when Hamilton closed, we went to Franklin. Franklin, then I had to walk over to Eastern Heights. But I was sitting there thinking, first of all, I got a few points. One, anytime that a person or business bids on a job, they normally get it, 'cause they the lowest bidder. So how can somebody come back and now say, we need to make some major adjustments, not minor adjustments, major adjustments, that may have been able to be completed by the pe, by the companies they beat out? My second point is, if there is a situation where there's a community, or a part of a community without a school, it is no longer attractive to many people. Growing up on the south side, we used to have corner stores, such as Franklin, Frank's Market, and Miss McDonald's grocery, store, where, but they faded away. But if the school fades away, under the administration of responsible adults, what does that leave that school district? Let's just go to social work real quick. There's some zonings that protects our kids. A sexual offender cannot be amongst that area if the school is there. Without these schools, we're opening up avenues for the south side to be a worse situation than what it is. What about many of the agencies that are doing everything they can from a grassroots perspective, to impact the, the diverse neighborhood of the south side, to change children's lives? How are they going to work if the children are now getting home an hour or two later because of busing? And now that program can no longer reach the needs of those children? How's it going to affect children like myself? Growing up, I was a terrible reader. Truth be told, got laughed about, 'cause I could hardly read. But I went to Asbury's tutoring program in order to work on my weakness. If I got bused, I couldn't make it. But today, not only do I work for the county, not only do I run my own business, and not only do I pastor Mount Nebo Permanence Baptist Church, it is important to me to make an impact in people's lives. So we have to reevaluate this decision that's in the making, because we cannot leave the south side behind. Urban League, Save Our Sons, Marcus Madison, the South Side Coalition, they have done a lot in these last few years to be able to bring positive people on the south side that care about the south side together, to not be reactive, but be proactive. Without a school, it's destroying the entire vision. Thank you.
Thank you, Pastor Taylor. Next up is Penny Lynch, speaking on the schools.
I also prepared thoughts, so that I wouldn't forget anything. My name is Penny Lynch. I've been a resident of Elyria for 30 years, so most of my adult life. I'm here today, 'cause I have two major concerns. My first concern is that there's quite a bit of low-income rentals in the south side, and parents are struggling just to keep the roof over their heads. They don't have transportation, they can't afford a car. We don't have a good busing system for people to get around, much less to have to get to a school. What happens when a kid gets sick, and the nurse calls and says, you need to come pick up this kid, he's got a fever of 102, and you need to take care of him? And now we have a mother, hopefully, she has a friend that's still home that can take her to get her sick son, sick daughter. If, if she doesn't have transportation, does the kid have to wait then to get on the school bus to go home? And what's he gonna do in the meantime? Sit in the nurse's office? And then expose all the other kids on the bus? I'm also concerned about what having no elementary school on the south side will do to the property values of the south side. Once people that consider moving here find out that there is no neighborhood school, and that they're gonna have to send their small child across town by a bus to some other school, they're not gonna wanna live here. Now, my house, I bought, like I say, 30 years ago. I've refinanced it back when it was a good market. Since the market dropped, I now have an assessment of less than half of what I owe on that mortgage. I can't even get a home line of credit, because the house is worth so little at this point. I know the housing market had a lot to do with that, when it crashed, but I also know that, again, having a school system and having a strong area is very important. The other thing, too, is with the low property values, without a school that kind of ties the community together, we aren't gonna be attractive for businesses. They aren't gonna wanna come in, and there go jobs, there go places like grocery stores, you know, we have Aldi's, and that's it. If Aldi's doesn't carry it, a lot of people here can't get it, period. That's all that is to it. The only other place, I guess, is Family Dollar. I think they carry some food at much higher cost, but I believe that a community is only as good as its school system, that I have voted for every levy that has come along in the last 30 years, because I grew up knowing how important a strong school system is to a city, to a community. We moved a lot when I was growing up. We settled in one area, because that was one of the top 10 school systems in the United States. I know that Elyria would be a long time away from reaching that, but I believe it is reachable. Any school system can be that strong. It can't be that strong if you're talking about minimizing schools, kids not having access to them. It's just not gonna work. As the property values drop, so will everything else, the whole community will drop. I probably, if this happens, would not bother voting for another levy, because honestly, it has no benefit to me, and it hurts, hurts my home more than it helps it. So, I don't have kids, but like I was saying, the schools are very important, even for people like me without kids. Local schools provide a base for the kids outside of school hours also. It helps those friendships grow, and it gives more personal support to the kids themselves. When I was growing up, we had those strong relationships with the neighbor kids and through school. Mostly, we got together and did homework together, that kind of thing. And our parents were everybody's parents. When I had a problem that I didn't feel comfortable talking to my parents about, I could go to my friend's parents and talk to them. I think critical, especially in this time, that the kids have that support, and schools that are local provide that support. This is how you build a relationship within the neighborhood. I'm asking that no hasty decisions be made, I think that's what I'm hearing. I'm also urging the board to give more time for the community to have input on this critical decision. Obviously, there's a lot of people that want input. One other thing I've heard tonight from the contractors, is that this is primarily a money issue, and we really need to look at the whole picture here. We need to look at the community, at the children, at the homeowners, all of that. It's not about the money, it's about the people that build, that make a community. That's all I have.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Lynch. Next up is Jesse Hill, speaking on the schools.
Like I say, my name is Jesse Hill. I am commander of NAVVET, Chapter 74. I'm an Army veteran. For you, for those of you all that don't know what NAVVET stands for, it's the National Association of Black Veterans.
Thank you for your service.
Thank you. I also like to point out, before I get started, I wanna point out to you guys, I see one person in the room that I have a whole lot of respect for, Ms. Kim Velez. She is the principal at Eastern Heights. Although I do not live in the Elyria City School District, I live on the south side, I am, I have been a mentor for young boys at Eastern Heights for the last seven years. A mentor at the high school for the last five years. Like I said, I have, I'm in the mentor school district, but I do do things for Elyria City School District. And I like to give my wife kudos for this, because she the one that really got me involved in it. She was a alcohol and drug counselor for the Elyria City School District, and that's how she got me involved in it. I got involved in it, 'cause she wanted me to bring some ties, some neckties to the schools in Eastern Heights, and show the kids how to tie ties, and that's how I got involved in it. I know Mr. Jama, I know Mike, and I know Mr. Brubaker, and there's Ms. Anne last night. But anyway, I have a couple questions about this project and stuff. When it came up, it was five schools. All of a sudden, it come down, it's gonna be three schools. I'd like to know who made the decision to pick the school on the south side? I ask that question, because this is not our first rodeo. The south side, whenever something come up short, they cannot find the money, they say, let's cut something on the south side. Don't take my word, do your own research. Case is out. Oh, can't afford the pools anymore. Let's cut it from the south side. Now we can't afford the schools, let's cut it from the south side. I'd like to know who made that decision to pick the south side? That's one question. I said earlier, I mentor young boys. We try to teach them the right thing to do, how to have respect, how to make your word How can we tell our kids to do this, when we're not even doing it? How can we tell our kids to do this when we're not even doing it? As I said last night, the South Side has always supported these levies. Not only the school levies, because I can't vote on the school levy, but any levy for the city, we always supported. But we're the first one to get cut. Case in point, some of you might remember, you know about the River Walk? You know where that money came from? Yeah, that was money slated for the South Side. They used the South Side to get those funds, and then somebody said, "Well, you know, we can't do this, we can't do that." Hell, you could've used that money to help the homeowners to fix up their homes. To fix their homes up, then you got more money coming in. But you wanna build a river walk? Don't take my word. Check it out. And I'm not here to beat on you or the city council, but I would love to have to see some city council members here, too, because this is not just a South Side problem, this is a community problem. Like I said, one day, one day you're gonna come to us, want us to support you, not just the school, but the city of Larry. You're gonna come here and ask for our support, and we're gonna say, "We don't know you." In closing, I would like to say this here. I cannot vote for the levies. I can vote for everything else. But I promise you, I'm not threatening you, because I don't make threats. I promise you, if we do not get that school, I do everything I can to talk with everyone I know to make sure another levy get passed. I promise you that. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Hill. Next up is Kimberly Marbury, speaking on schools. Franklin?
All right, so I'm a little nervous, so please forgive me. But I did want to just talk a little bit about Franklin. I don't want to repeat what everyone has already said, because that's everyone's feeling. We don't want the school to go. We don't want Franklin to go to the South Side to lose a school. I'm gonna start off. I'm not a South Side girl. I've been in Larry for 42 years, almost 42. I went to Jefferson, I went to Westwood, I graduated from Larry West. I got married, moved away from Alaria for six or seven years, went to Cleveland. Then I started to have kids, and the very first thing that I said was, "The only place my kids are gonna go to school is the Larry City Schools." The only place. When I moved back, I was fortunate enough to get a house on this side of town. Now, I was scared. Why? Because I wasn't a South Side person, and I didn't know the dedication and the resilience of those on the South Side. Now I know, because there's not another place that I would want my three kids going to right now, at all. When I first got here, I said, I did not want to go there. We went to kindergarten village, we came here, and then the preschool opened at Franklin. They had an open house. I went to the open house. I said, "Okay, you guys have to sell me," because there's not a way, no way I'm sending my kids to Franklin. I sat in there with a room full of dedicated teachers. Not that we're forced to be there, but wanted to be there. And those teachers are still there to this day. Now, we spoke, Mr. Brubaker, last night, well, not spoke, but at the meeting last night, and you said that those schools, "Don't worry about the teachers, don't this, no, the teachers, nothing's gonna happen to the teachers." But you can't tell me that you take away two of those schools, that those teachers at Franklin aren't gonna be affected, because they are. And what you're gonna lose is a bunch of dedicated teachers that are more than just that school. I have, I mean, I didn't come prepared with the speech, I didn't come prepared with what to say, and I'm really just speaking from my heart. But if you lose those schools, that school at Franklin, or those teachers, and everything on the South Side, I'm telling you, it's not gonna be good for this side of the town, at all. And I'll also say this, when I came back to Alaria, I didn't choose to go to the South Side or move to the South Side, but I did choose to send my kids to Franklin because of the dedication, because of the Ms. Hennesses, because of the Ms. Syrachys, because of the Ms. Licks, because of the Ms... What's your teacher's name? What's your teacher's name? Ms. Karysey, because of the Ms. Filmins. Because you guys don't understand me, when these kids go to school, there is a dedication. Right now, we have a third-grade literacy, reading literacy program, that these kids, they have to pass this test to go to the fourth grade. You bounce these kids around, and I trust me, there's gonna be... And I'm emotional, and I'm sorry if I start to cry, but there's a lot of kids that aren't gonna pass that class. They're not gonna pass that test. They're gonna be held back. There is. And there's programs, and there's resources, and there's teachers that are dedicated. Trust me, I know, because my son is going through it, that are dedicated to make sure that those kids pass that test, because I'm going through it with my son. And you take that away, you take away those teachers, you take that away from those kids on that South Side, it's gonna be a mess. That's all I have. Oh, I do have something else, I'm sorry. All I ask is that you guys wait. You said yesterday, that all of you heard about this on Saturday. Wait. Take your time. Think about what you guys are gonna do. Because Alaria isn't divided, where the West Side, the South Side, the East Side, and the West Side. So I don't count three schools we should have, I count four.
Thank you, Ms. Marbury. David Cooper, speaking on the schools.
Hello.
After hearing the presentation by the design team, or that, there's several questions that really, really, truly need to be answered. One of the questions is, what about the transparency? There appears to be no transparency involved in this process. My question is, how did ACOM become the prime contractor, the contractor of this process? What was the process involved in selection? Transparency is what we need in this, so we know, the public knows what's going on. Coming out of the engineering field myself, there's some questions that I have that really don't pass the common sense test. I worked for a company called General Dynamics Land Systems, and when we would get RFPs from the USG, which is the United States government, we were their customer, they were our customer. In other words, they set a price and said, "You could not exceed this." And so when all our entities got together, we said that we could do this for so much, so much, so much, so much. If it met it, we got it. Okay? But the thing is, we're their customer. We're ACOM's customer. We told them that we want to build this for this much. They should be doing everything to accommodate this. Everything they need to accommodate this, this process. And it doesn't appear that, it doesn't appear we were doing that. And as everyone says, the kids, the children are the ones that are, that are, that are the ones that are gonna be failing. Failing because they're the ones that are gonna have to be traveling. Growing up on the East Side, I lived a block from Prospect. Okay? But however, I was bussed, when busing started in the city of Alaria, I was bussed all the way across the Ely. Didn't make a whole lot of sense to me, but that's what happened when Alaria started. You're sending kids around all the time, or all across the town and so forth like that. Do we really want to do that? What are we actually doing? As people have said, sometimes you have parents that don't, they walk their kids to school, and if something happens to their kids, to their children, what happens? They get a phone call, "Come pick up your child." And as everyone says, they have no transportation. What is the socioeconomic impact upon their lives? What about the city itself? What's gonna happen to the city? As someone has said, "This affects the entire city." Cut off my arm, what's gonna happen? I can't, I can't, I'm not fully functional. So what we really need to look at is the impact upon the children, first of all, and the city as well. How is it, if I, why do I want to move into a city? Why do I want to move to place? That, the education is not there, especially in the neighborhood. So that needs to look at, to that and everything. And there's one thing that, growing up, my father, every single one of us, he stressed education for us. Every single one of us either have a undergraduate or advanced degrees, because he stressed education. He stressed education. So that's something that we need to be doing for those kids, keep on stressing that education, because in that school, in Franklin, there could be the next designer, there could be the next Giles, there could be the next ma'am, Jimmison. There's there, but because we're moving them across town to other places, that may not occur, because there's some great mentors that are going, there's a lot of great things that are happening in that school, and it needs to continue. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Cooper. Next up is Roger Johnson. We got back to you.
My name is Roger Johnson. I'm a lifelong resident on Alaria. Graduated from Alaria High, went to all of Alaria's schools. I'm glad to see the Chronicle Telegram here tonight, so hopefully they can get to all of the homeowners and voters of Alaria of our concerns, and not just chosen bits and pieces. Because this is a problem not just for the South Side, but for the Northeast and West also. We all voted for five schools. South Side property values will go down. No young people will want to buy in the South Side with no schools. Kids will have to be bussed until they get to the high school. We have a new sports center coming. Yeah. The South Side will become a depressed side of town. Is this what you want to represent, your new sports center? This is bad for all of Alaria. All the other districts, do you want our kids coming to your schools? This will cut the time for your teachers, for the time that they will be spent with your kids. Do you really want that? More buses coming to your schools, as the mothers are waiting to drop off their kids and pick up their kids. You want all these buses coming into your neighborhood? Deal with that congestion? Bullying, we've already talked about. Remember, when you come back to us for the money for maintenance, busing, and other needs, which you will, because you always do. I heard the committee sit down here tonight and say, "In less than two years' time, boy, expenses has went up. We can't do this now for this much money." Is the auditor in Alaria gonna allow me, a retired person on a fixed income, to go? Hey, I voted for that levy, but expenses has went up. I can't pay these taxes. Is he gonna let me do that? I don't think so.
Thank you, Mr. Johnson. Next up, and I apologize, I cannot read the last name, but it's Derek from Morgan Avenue, speaking on streets.
Hello. My name is Derek Robbins. And I grew up on the South Side. And what I didn't hear, I mean, most of the questions that I had to ask have been asked already. But there was one, there's a couple of things that wasn't asked. The South Side have had, have had things taken from them for years. It started off with Gates. It started off with where Edison, where Hamilton sits now used to be an elementary school. That's gone. Where Franklin is now elementary school, used to be a junior high school. That's gone. Now you're about to take whatever, you're about to take Franklin away, which is an elementary school, so you won't have no schools. Ever since those schools have been taken away, there has not been nothing put there to replace them. So when you tear down Hamilton, you tear down Franklin, our kids, myself, have to go to the South Side and look at empty fields. You know, growing up from the South Side, and I go out to South Rec, not South Rec, but where the baseball diamond used to be. I played baseball in that baseball diamond years ago. And now I can take my grandkids there, but I can't see nothing here but woods. Okay? When I started my PB football program there in 1999, in the South Side of Alaria, the pool was there, it is not there now. So is there anything, and I talk, and I have to say this before I go any further, I actually sit on the team with ACOM. I just happened to be one of the individuals picked as a contractor to do work for the four to five schools in the city of Alaria. My first introduction to entrepreneurship was from the South Side of Alaria, because where the Boys and Girls Club basketball diamond sits now, used to be Taylor's Garage, used to be Taylor's gas station. And I used to work there when I was a kid, and it was minority-owned. The Taylor Brothers owned it. And I used to go there for $1.50 a day to work, just to make money to go swimming. So that was my first time being introduced to a minority-owned business. So I am a business owner now, been a business owner now for over 20 years and been successful. And the South Side is an area, is a place where most of us who lived on the South Side, who have, you know, progressed in life, come back to look back at it, to take your grandkids, I have eight grandkids now, to go back to a community where there's nothing. I can't say, "This is where your granddad played, this is where he went to school, this is where he played, this is what he..." There's nothing there anymore. So what, why, is the same, is there anything in place to put anything back on the South Side that's new? A school? Because it's three elementary schools, a junior high school, now it's about to be nothing. And if we're gonna do a bus program, how long does that last? We gonna do two, two or three years? And they've already asked, you know, the question's been asked already. If you have a bus, you know, you start bussing the kids, and after a couple of years, you're gonna ask more money to do busing. Well, can you actually have an indefinite bus program? That these kids, after two or three years, you're gonna say, "Now, we can't provide rides for them to go to and from school?" So what is there in plan to put in those empty areas? You know, even myself, even though I'm grown and I've moved on, to go down to the South Side to see Hamilton not there anymore, and to see Franklin's not there anymore, that's depressing, real depressing. And I think the community, I think the South Side of Alaria deserves more respect than that, including the kids.
Thank you, Mr. Robbins. Janet DeWald, speaking on South Schools.
Hi, I am Alarian from way back. My dad and his 11 brothers and sisters all attended Alaria's schools. I graduated in '62. My sons are the graduate, and my two grandkids are graduates of Alaria's schools. I live on the South Side. I moved into my house May of 1980, and 10 years before that, I ran it on East Avenue. So I have lived on the South Side for a long time. My son went to Hamilton first, then he went to Franklin for junior high, then he went to Eastern Heights for, I mean, for junior high, for Eastern Heights. Now they're not even letting our kids go to Eastern Heights, they're bussing. They're, they're bused somewhere to one of the other junior highs. Our kids are not going to Eastern Heights. And, uh, you're taking away our school. Now, every time Valeria needs to cut something, it's the South Side. When it came to putting pools in, everybody else got a pool but the South Side. When it came to the recreation center, everyone else got a recreation center but the South Side. We were the last one, and they had to do a special levy to get that South Side rec center. Granted, this, they are putting in a splash pad for the spring, but we still do not have a pool for the kids to learn to swim in. And if anything that comes up that needs to be cut, it's always the South Side that gets cut. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. DeWald.
Hi, my name is Kara King. I am a third-generation Valeria High School graduate. My children are going to be fourth generation here in a few years. Since I have been in kindergarten, you have promised me new schools. That's number one thing that I have heard my entire life. And now, you've put this carrot in front of us, and we said, "Yay, new schools," and we have had celebrations. And now, no, you can't have your new schools. And this upsets me. It infuriates me. I feel betrayed, um, by my community leaders. I feel that there has got to be some way to make these five schools. I'm sitting back there, and I hear moving walls and moving doors, and are we creating a spaceship? Or are we going to have a building where we can come together? I work on the South Side. I work at The Horizon in Wilkes Villah. We, um, collaborate with the other community partners. I was very excited that we were gonna have this new school, because Ms. Lisa Lick has always been very welcoming in her school. And I thought, "Oh, we're gonna have a new state-of-the-art school. She's gonna show it off. We'll have our meetings there. We can really get in the community now." Being that I am in Wilkes Villah, I have four room mothers this year in my preschool classroom. I have twenty children. Four mothers show up for everything that I need them to do. They don't have cars. So, when the kids go to kindergarten on the other side of town, my parents are not going to be able to get there unless there's transportation. I have concerns for the community partners who provide transportation to and from their after-school programs. I've seen the nightmare it is just driving from one side of town to down Golf Road, or traffic gets congested all over right now. I just have a lot of concerns. And I'm also worried about accessibility for the kids. My kids have always had opportunity to do after-school programs at school. Whether it's with a church group that comes in, or now, my daughter does drama. She's in cheerleading. My kids like to be at school. I am fortunate enough that I can get them back and forth to their activities. If I was a parent that does not have a car, and the school's on the other side of town, that's going to limit that accessibility for these children. Twenty-first century skills is not about the building. It's about those connections and making connections.
Thank you, Ms. King. Denita Tolbert, South Side Schools.
Good evening. My name is Denita Tolbert Brown. I'm a graduate of the Valeria City School System. I have a son currently in the Valeria City Schools. I am also an educator in a different district. But I am passionate about education and educating all children. It seemingly is going to be a sad day if there is not a school on the South Side of Valeria. Most of my questions have been answered. A lot of people have walked down my street with my questions. But one thing I'd like to know is, how many students are going to be affected by this change? How many students are going to be affected? And with that being said, forming bonds, students form bonds with their students, or teachers, students form bonds with their teachers. If you're gonna take some of the teachers and move them to different schools, and these kids have established close relationships with them and are able to talk about problems that they're facing, what happens then? Also, we talk about state testing. State testing, you know about it. You hear about it all the time. What happens? Seven o'clock in the morning, Johnny has to get up at six o'clock to catch a bus to go to another side of town, to get a Super Donut and an orange juice this big, so that he can pass that test. He hasn't had enough sleep. Are you thinking about that? State testing is something that's going nowhere. We all know this. So, please, let's consider the things other than the fact that two point zero two million to two point three eight million, is there that much of a cost for academics for our kids? Are we thinking about that? And also, someone over here said they had seventeen years of experience. Seventeen years of knowledge makes you very well capable to make this a reality. So, we need to think about that as well. I also leave with that. That sign right there says, "School boards lead so students can achieve." Let's make that happen.
Thank you, Ms. Tolbert. Dee Tolbert. You didn't sign up for the attendance, did you? Okay.
She did, but she just... But however, uh... Good evening. My name is Dee Tolbert. I am a citizen. I was raised on the South Side of town. I attended Hamilton in my young days. And now, I'm concerned. My daughter just stole my saying. I've been looking at that sign ever since I took a seat in this hall. And that was right there, and it's just like she took it away from my mind. But however, it speaks for itself. I'm concerned, because if you take away the school over there on the South Side, just like someone have already said, you've taken away everything mostly. There's no grocery store, because Valeria, uh, West Side don't have one either. But we can run to the mall, that's a little closer. But I'm thinking about the stadium. And as I stated on last evening, I'm concerned about academia, not sports. So, is there any way possible that you can work on that stadium and find you some money? Because it can happen. I believe in the saying, "All things can happen through Christ who strengthen us and use our minds." That's all I'm saying to you, school board. Please, take your time, pray, and evaluate the situation.
Thank you, Ms. Tolbert. Tim Gabhart.
No relation. I'm a lot younger anyways. Better-looking. I have a lot of friends on the board, and a lot of friends in the administration that I've, that I've trusted and I've felt compassion about when it comes to voting for school levies and even, you know, city levies, although this isn't what we're talking about tonight. I heard the question earlier that, that it seems like the three-school program is what everybody's kinda hating for. Why then, was that not the route that we, that we were, uh, that you wanted to take us on to begin with? I listened, I went to Ely the night where they had the footprint for the schools and the five schools, and they painted such a great picture for all of us voters that, that I kinda said, "You know what? That's a good plan. That's a good, good deal. I think we can, we can do this." My wife and I have grown up here in Valeria. I went to Franklin myself, very proud of that, that went to Franklin, graduated from Valeria High School. I've lived here my entire life. I love Valeria. I want it to do well. I know there's a lot of warts and a lot of pimples that, that need to be taken care of, and I feel for all the people on the South Side that feel neglected at this point. Because I think they make a good point. When there's not that focal point of the school in their area, it kinda takes away from the, someone mentioned that housing costs and so forth will depreciate and so on. And I think that that's right. I see the kids every day walking to Ely School. I take my granddaughter Abby there every day. And I see everybody that's community-involved, Dr. Debe out in the parking lot waving the cars in to make sure that it's, it's run safely and, and run, run very well. And I, my concern, I guess, is like everybody else here, is eventually, those costs for busing and, and maintenance of the schools is gonna continue to increase. I think we have to find a way, and I'm not, I envy you people up there. I told Mike years ago, I said, "You're crazy to be on that board." But, uh, that you have to find a way to make that footprint that you've sold us on a couple years ago in November. You have to make a way to find that, to be able to make it work. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Gabhart. Tommy Harris. Franklin and Hamilton. And you had an acronym, is that for pastor? I wanted to make sure I recognized that.
You're right, you're right. If you'll allow me to bring, um, a guest. Oh, Jesus. I'm Tommy D. Harris, resident here in the city of Valeria. Born and raised on the South Side. I'm also a pastor in back international ministries. And my, I'm praying for you all. You have a tough decision you have to make, and I, the word that kept saying is, "Wait." And I pray that you take that wisdom to make sure we make the right decision. I love our community. I love, we, we left for about maybe ten months, went to LCC, but I really felt led to come back to the South Side of Valeria. And I love my city. And we will rock with our city. We will rock with the South Side. And so, I ask you to make the wise choice, but I will be praying along for you. And I'm gonna let Mr. Whitfield take the rest.
So, so I wasn't gonna speak, but, um, a couple of things. One, Ms. Mazers in the house, that's my kindergarten and first-grade teacher, so I'm like, "Shoot, I can't let her down." Uh, then Ms. Dees in here, another one of my teachers, Ms. Van Juice, 'cause same thing. As a bulldog, as a South Side resident, a grown-up on that neighborhood, on that side of town, at the end of the day, let's just figure it out. You know, uh, we've been involved in this process, helping to recruit for the, and campaign for the levy. We've been involved in trying to recruit people for the jobs that are coming for the construction projects. We've been involved with the minority business aspect. You know, um, we've been involved in so many aspects. Let's just figure this out and make it work. You know, let's figure, but not having a school on the South Side is not an option. I mean, that's just, it can't even be a consideration. Yeah, when I first heard that, I, I honestly thought it was fake news. I was like, "That ain't real. Ain't no way that they chose the South Side not to have a school." No, they doesn't, no, that ain't real. They're showing up there like, "Yeah, they really considering it." I'm like, "No." So, so, I, I know the folks here, I know that, you know, maybe things, the information got out quicker than how we could pull it in. That can't be an option. We know the families over there, you know, that's the poor side of town, the black and brown side of town, the, the town, the side of town that, uh, we want parent engagement, that we want community engagement. We want, um, we, we expect so much from that community, um, and we know that community's been left behind so often. We, we know that we can't stomach the fact of just leaving this community behind. So, I know, you know, we gotta figure, we gotta figure it out in the AECOM, and you folks, and this is, and I'm gonna get in trouble, my wife. See, that's why I wasn't gonna speak, 'cause my mouth get me in trouble. Uh, but this is, you know, I've been involved very intimately with the visioning and all this stuff. If we don't do a school on the South Side, I don't wanna be involved anymore. It's that simple. This is too important, it's too, it, it just sends a message that is just leaving the community behind. And, and, um, I know that the, the, the folks I've worked with, I think y'all share the sentiment. So, let's just figure it out. If we gotta go to foundations, go to the library, go to corporate, if we gotta, you know, create strategic partnerships to make it happen, as Ms. Warren said, "If there's a will, there's a way." So, let's make it our will to make it happen, and let's figure it out from there. So, that's it.
And we approve this message.
Thank you, Pastor Harris and Mr. Whitfield. The last but not least, and I'm gonna ask Annie to help me with this, because I have no clue. And there is no address. So, who was the last person? There we go. I knew if I rambled all the way up, the person would know who I was talking about. And if you would, state your name, so I can document that, please.
Hi, everyone. My name is Shontobia Beard. Shontobia. Yes. And I graduated from Valeria High in two thousand and seven. I now live on the North Side of Valeria. My daughter attends Franklin Elementary. Um, I don't know if you know, but Franklin Elementary gets about an hour extra of schooling than all the other elementary schools in Valeria. My daughter's on a special I P for reading and math. I can't tell you how much the dedication these teachers have. I mean, she's turned around completely. She's almost at where she needs to be. She's been attending Franklin since first grade. She went to kindergarten in Windsor, and then she went to Crestwood. I liked Windsor, but I didn't care for Crestwood at all. Took her to Franklin, I fell in love. Moved to the North Side. I'm like, "Oh, no, I'm not taking her back to Windsor. I'm not taking her." No, I love Franklin, I'm taking her back to Franklin. So, the teachers there, um, I almost gave up on believing that teachers could, um, put hope into these children, or even cared about these children at all. That's, that's what I got to, because I started to know, it's like, teachers don't get paid enough to care about these kids. The teachers on the South Side, the teachers that go to Franklin, they care about these children. They go there every day, they make sure they eat, they make sure that at home is okay. They're, they're questioning about them personally. She enjoys going to school. She, she loves Franklin. And it's honestly, it's heartbreaking. It's heartbreaking. When I got the news the other day that they were closing, like he said, I thought it was fake news. I'm like, "Nah, that's not, you guys, I, I don't know how you could sleep at night." I'm not trying to put it on you, but if Franklin was to close, I do not know how you could sleep at night. The South Side needs a school. When you look at Avon, you look at North Olmsted, you look at Vermillion, you look at Orpland, they're all these booming cities, they're building these schools up. You go visit, your, their teams are playing us, "Oh, look at their gymnasium, blah, 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 blah." When you come here, all we have is Valeria High School. I fought for Valeria High School when I went to Valeria High. I couldn't vote at the time. I know what we were getting ourselves into, you know, I just knew that we needed a new high school. It was hot, we ain't had no A C, you know, that type of stuff. So, that's the first thing I thought about when they said, "Oh, they're gonna build these five schools, da-da-da-da." I was like, "That's unbelievable. That's crazy. I want that. We need that. Valeria needs that. Not just the South Side, Valeria needs that." And, um, I don't know, I just really hope you guys rethink this, and like I said, I'm gonna pray on it, and just hope God touches you and make a wise choice. I already was let down politically in my country with this president that we have. I'm not gonna go there. So, please, can you not let the South Side of Valeria down? Because that's what's gonna happen. I feel like our children, they need to dream, they need to strive for better, and every child from the South Side has a story to tell. And that's about it.
Thank you, Ms. Beard. That brings us to the conclusion of the public comment part of our meeting. And the next portion on the agenda is board member discussion items. So, with that being said, I, I would, you guys have all read the newspaper the last few days. You, you've read my personal statements in regards to the situation that we're in. I was not speaking on behalf of the board. They, the four board members can speak on their own behalf here this evening if they choose. But I'm not gonna reiterate what some of the folks said. I'm not gonna reiterate what I've stated in the paper. But I will say this, as a part of reiterating. I am committed to working with the team to find a way to put that school where it belongs on the South Side. I heard from many people over the last few days, and on Saturday, when we were given this information, uh, and, and there is, folks, there is no blame, okay? There, there is no real blame here. It's the situation, okay? But when I got the information, or when the board heard the information on Saturday morning, that was the first time that we had heard that. And we had to take some time to digest the information that was given to us. And it took some time to digest that. And I know the other board members can speak on their own half- And I know the other board members can speak on their own behalf, but I spent Saturday, Sunday, Monday, Tuesday, today, talking to many people. I've taught, reached out to our state representative Manning, our state representative Nathan Manning, and our Senator Gail Manning, and recommended by, just reached out to Senator Brown, I did that today as well. I don't know where that's gonna end up. But I do believe that there has to be a way to find a school to put on the South Side. And some of you folks talked about the growth that's there. And it's no secret that I work for this city, and I've been involved in some of the growth and involved in some of the removing the dilapidated properties in Mr. Marcus Madison's ward, that he's been a big part of. But when you drive down Middle Avenue and you see a brand-new roadway with all-new lighting, then you go by the high school, and then you drive a little bit farther down the South Side, and what is proposed to happen is to have an open lot where Hamilton is. Then you drive a little farther down Middle Avenue, and you see where Asbury Church is, and I believe there is plans for possibly the South End Branch Library to go there. Then you go a little farther, farther south, and you're gonna see a $14 million sports complex. You take that school out of the picture, you annihilate what's been happening there. And that is my opinion. I think we need to work together to try to find a way to make this happen. I'm committed to doing that, and at that, I'm gonna, I'll zip, because as Mr. Sloan said, five minutes is difficult for me. So, I will leave it open to, I'll start with my Vice President, Ms. Karstaffen.
Good evening, everyone. I just want to say that I appreciate everyone who spoke here this evening. First of all, I want to say that as I'm sitting here, the first thing that comes to mind is it's better not to make a vow than to make one and break it. It's better not to make a promise than to promise someone something and then go back on that promise. And that's not what I intend to do. I only have one vote, I only have one voice, but it is definitely my intention to work with our committee, with our superintendent, with our board, to do everything possible to make sure that, not, I don't wanna, I don't wanna beat around the bush, I want to be very clear, not to make, I don't wanna say to make sure that every child has a new school, I want to say to make sure that there is a new school on the South Side of Alariah. That needs to be pointed out. Also, I want to say that I understand, I hear what you're saying, I've been hearing it ever since Saturday. People on the South Side, they're feeling very, very left out, they're feeling very, very disappointed, very, very misused again, once again. So, I understand that point. And I want to, want you to know that I'm doing everything possible, working with all of the board, the superintendent, everyone over here. I'm working with all of them to make sure that we have a school on the South Side. And in that, I just have one question for, I think it is Bill from the state of Ohio. When you were sitting here, I know that you said that there was one other place when you had to go back and revamp, that you were able to then go back and then add that school that you were trying to eliminate, and you said it took a lot of work, and it was very difficult to do so. I want to say to you that these people, they're worth that extra work that we need to go back and redo. They're just worth it, they're worth it. So, I just hope that whatever we need to do collaboratively, we can do that, so that we can have a school on the South Side.
Mr. Gebhardt?
Well, first of all, I'd like to say thank you all for being so respectful and having this meeting run so smooth. I've seen some of these board meetings in other areas, and they are not pretty. You can ask Joyce about that. I always thought when we were doing negotiations, that's be the worst thing we had to deal with. Now, I'm finding something different, and I think this is gonna be the hardest decision we make. And I can't promise anything, but we will do whatever we can to make everything happen.
Mr. Alec?
Well, first of all, I want to thank everybody that showed up here tonight. You all should be commended for your dedication to the community. Mr. Whitfield and Mr. Madison for being leaders in the community, to gather the people and bring them here today to let their voices be heard. I think this is really what good government is all about right here. And I appreciate every person that showed up here tonight to talk about this issue here. It is very, very difficult to sit in this position here and try to do what's best for the whole community. I don't think there's a person on this board that doesn't want to have a school on the South Side. And it even feels more like something that we have to do. And we're gonna do everything that we can to make the decision that's right for the community. And we got a lot of work to do here. This just started Saturday, and there was talk of actually voting and approving all this tonight. I don't think there's a board member here tonight that's interested in moving forward. We're gonna do everything that we can do to make the right decision and do what's best for the entire school district and for each and every kid in the school district. And we're gonna take our time on this, and again, thank you for showing up, thank you for sharing your comments. They are definitely being heard.
Mr. Bax?
Thank you. Yeah, again, thank you very much for showing up here tonight. We've heard a lot of things and a lot of neat comments, but really, a lot of emotion, really heartfelt emotion. So, I think that certainly has been heard. Really have nothing else to add, other than I've been working on projects like this and similar-type projects for 40 years. And there, yeah, who's ever telling us, advising us to take our time and think about this, and you have to let that, you actually, absolutely have to let that go. I mean, it has to happen, because it's, in so many cases, it's the value of all your input, and everyone out here is probably thinking right now about things that we might do to help, to help this situation. Those are the ideas that help us, that help us get this done. And so, you know, when you have a news, when you have some sort of a flash, you know, write it down and share it with somebody. Share it with me, or share it with one of the board members. Because, yeah, I'm committed, I'm committed to work the original plan. We had five buildings in the plan, and I want it to happen.
Thank you, Mr. Bax. I do want to give our superintendent, Dr. Jama, an opportunity to speak in this portion, because I think it's very pertinent to the discussion we've had for the last little while.
Absolutely, Mr. President, thank you. And a couple of things. First of all, I would like to thank all of you for coming out tonight. This is my 30th year in education. This is my 25th year in the Alariah, 24th year in the Alariah City Schools. I said it 24 years ago, that I was proud to be a pioneer, and tonight, I'm even more proud to be a pioneer by you coming forward and you sharing your stories, your personal stories with us, the board, myself, and the district. It means a lot. Many of you know me, how many of you are my students in here? Raise your hand, please. We have hands going up all over the place. I would like to, I need to call out somebody, I'm not sure where he's at. Marcus, where are you at?
I'm Marcus.
Oh, back there, stand, I was looking for you sitting, that's why I didn't see you standing. You know, Marcus was one of my students, where's Frank? Frank was one of my students. Yesterday, in the last couple of days, since last Saturday, we've had an opportunity to digest a lot of information. And I'll tell you, yesterday, although there was a lot of information in the paper, both good, both bad, I had an opportunity, along with several members of my team, to sit down with your councilman, Marcus. And I'll tell you what, I was proud of that young man when he was my student at Northwood, but I'm even more proud of that young man tonight. Let's give him a round of applause, please. Marcus, you have given me compliment after compliment, no matter where I've gone, and I thank you for that, and tonight, it's your turn. But on the matter at hand, we heard a lot of people speak tonight, we heard a lot of stories, and they're all heartfelt, they're all honest, and I hear you, we hear you, and I think the board has said that tonight, we hear you. And I am pledging to you tonight that we will do what it takes to get the job done and the job done right. It's gonna take a lot of work, it's gonna take a lot of dedication, but there's no doubt in my mind that this community steps forward and they step up when the going gets tough, and we will get going. So, we're gonna do what it needs to take to get this job done. I think you heard the board member say that tonight, and you're hearing it from me, your superintendent, that I believe in the kids in this community, I believed in the kids in this community, and I believe in the kids in this community. And having a school on the South Side and at the Ely location is the right way to go, so let's try to get that done. Not just the one school, but all five schools. And we'll do what it takes to get it done. And if it takes petitioning the state of Ohio, we will do that. If it takes, if it takes talking to our representatives, then we're gonna do that. And I'll tell you, if we do have to make tough decisions down the road, if we do have to make those tough decisions that we're talking about tonight, I want to know that we've turned over every rock possible to get the job done. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Jama. And just so you know, we're gonna move on to the exciting stuff of the board. Feel free to stick around, and we're gonna move on to the next item on the agenda, which is the adoption of a resolution in support of school safety and reducing violence in the schools. So, if you'll bear with me, by, read through the resolution. Whereas the school violence has become an epidemic in the United States of America, whereas the children and school employees of our nation deserve to attend school without fear or death or injury, and their families deserve to send them to school without that same fear. Whereas there is a mutual responsibility of all citizens to address this problem, and the responsibility from preventing violent incidences cannot be relegated to school districts alone. Whereas multiple studies have shown that the majority of Americans support action to eliminate violence in our schools, whereas school board members, administrators, employees, and community members should work together with lawmakers, legal counsel, law enforcement, security experts to determine how best to ensure safety in their district. Therefore, be it resolved, the Alariah City Board of Education implores the President of the United States, the Governor of the State of Ohio, the United States Congress, the Ohio General Assembly to prioritize the protection of students and school employees by enacting legislation with funding for the following. Number one, enhanced mental health services and substance abuse treatment so that all individuals, including children, have sufficient access to these services. Number two, increased access to school safety measures, including but not limited to school resource officers, school safety infrastructure, and other security measures designed to protect students and staff from an active shooter on school grounds. Number three, training for school employees and enhanced coordination with law enforcement agencies and first responders to ensure appropriate responses to incidents of violence in schools. And number four, and finally, preserving the balance between the right to own firearms and the protection of students and school employees from any act of violence. With that being said, I'll entertain a motion to approve said resolution. Move to adopt the resolution? Move by Mr. Alec, second by Mr. Gebhardt. Any discussion? Madam Treasurer, if you please call the roll.
Mr. Alec?
Aye.
Mr. Bax?
Yes.
Ms. Karstaffen?
Aye.
And Mr. Brubaker?
Aye, motion carried. Meeting minutes, the approval of the board meeting minutes is detailed in your agenda from March 7, 2018. I'll entertain a motion to approve.
So moved.
Move by Ms. Karstaffen?
Second.
Second by Mr. Bax, any discussion? Madam Treasurer, if you call the roll.
Ms. Karstaffen?
Aye.
Mr. Bax?
Yes.
Mr. Alec?
Aye.
Mr. Gebhardt?
Aye.
And Mr. Brubaker?
Aye, motion carried. Treasurer, Clickinger, treasurer action items.
Thank you, Mr. President. Tonight, I am asking the board to accept the financial report for the month of February 2018, which includes all bank reconciliations, the investment report, cash balance report, and the appropriation expense reports as detailed in enclosure G1. Number two, to acknowledge, express appreciation, and accept the gifts and donations as listed in the bullet, or in the agenda. And that's it for this evening.
Thank you, Madam Treasurer. Do I have a motion to approve the items recommended by the treasurer as presented? So moved. Move by Mr. Bax?
Second.
Second by Mr. Gebhardt, any discussion? Madam Treasurer?
Mr. Bax?
Yes.
Mr. Gebhardt?
Aye.
Ms. Karstaffen?
Aye.
Mr. Alec?
Aye.
And Mr. Brubaker?
Aye, motion carried. Treasurer, other?
I don't have anything this evening.
We had a report from the OSFC, so we'll move on. Dr. Jama, superintendent action items.
Thank you, Mr. President. At this time, I would like to make the following recommendations under superintendent action items for the board's consideration this evening. Item number one, to approve the payment of stipends as listed below. $28.86 per hour not to exceed 40 hours to the following staff member for teaching English to parents. This stipend will be supported by the School Improvement Grant. Members of the board, I'm proud to say that this is a undertaking of academic services. We'll have Maria Gilmore not only teaching students in the district, but we have so many new parents to our community who are non-English speakers, that she's gonna actually work with the adults and the parents in this program to help them learn the English language. So, it's a, it's an outstanding program that, kudos again to Ann and her team. Item number two, to approve the overnight field trip for the Alariah High School Science Club students to Cleveland Metro Park Zoo on May 4th and 5th as detailed in enclosure K2. Item number three, to approve the overnight field trip for the Alariah High School Modern Intensive Unit students to Peninsula, Ohio on May 29th through the 31st, 2019 as detailed in enclosure K3. Item number four, to approve the overnight field trip for Prospect Elementary School 5th grade students to Peninsula, Ohio on November 14th through the 16th, 2018 as detailed in enclosure K4. To approve the overnight field trip for Alariah High School Robotics students to Louisville, Kentucky on April 25th through the 29th, 2018 as detailed in enclosure K5. I would ask Brian to come up in a little bit during my discussion time to talk about that, please. And with that, Mr. President, that concludes my recommendations.
Thank you, Dr. Jama. Do I have a motion to approve the items recommended by the superintendent as presented?
So moved.
Move by Mr. Alec, do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Gebhardt, any discussion? Dr. Jama, I do have a question, because we did talk about this, the robotics stuff, I talked to one of the parents, and you advised me that we were going to take care of their expenses.
Absolutely.
Very good, thank you. We have a motion and a second, any other discussion? Madam Treasurer?
Mr. Alec?
Aye.
Mr. Gebhardt?
Aye.
Mr. Bax?
Yes.
Ms. Karstaffen?
Aye.
And Mr. Brubaker?
Aye, motion carried. Superintendent, other?
I do not have any items under other, Mr. President, but I do have several items under superintendent personnel action items. At this point, Mr. President, I would like to make the following recommendations to the board. To approve the unpaid leave of absence of the following certified staff member as detailed below. Item number two, to approve the appointment of the following certified staff as detailed below. Again, you'll notice a substitute teacher and a home instruction tutor, we do our best and we continue to strive to continue to increase our number of daily substitutes to help out in the absence of a teacher. Item number three, to approve the resignation of the following classified staff member as detailed below. Item number four, to approve the appointment of the following classified administrator as detailed below, and I believe Mr. Taylor will do that introduction here as we move shortly. Item number five, to appoint, to approve the appointment of the following classified staff member as detailed below, and these are individuals going from one service to another. And with that, Mr. President, that concludes my recommendations under personnel action.
Thank you, Dr. Jama. Do I have a motion to approve the personnel action items?
So moved.
Move by Mr. Alec, second?
Second.
Second by Ms. Karstaffen, any discussion?
Discussion, question, where are we at with substitute teacher numbers?
We, our 81st higher.
81st?
81st.
And where do we want to be?
I'd love to be about 125 or more. In the heyday, that's what we were.
But I will tell you this-
That's not realistic now, though, is it? 125?
Really not, there's a severe teacher shortage.
But I'll tell you this, members of the board, when we increase the pay increase, was that, that's two years ago now, correct, Gary?
It was in '16, yes.
Two years ago, it has helped us considerably in attracting additional substitute teachers, even for that minimal amount.
Was there any discussion from Mr. Taylor on this introduction?
Absolutely.
Mr. Taylor?
Well, thank you.
Thank you for being here, Mr. Taylor.
Thank you, it's always a pleasure.
Thank you, it's always a pleasure. On the lighter side, this one gives me a lot of pleasure when I introduce new employees, but this is kind of a success story here in the Elyria School. Adrian joined the Elyria Schools, I wanna say, just a little over a year ago, and it kinda, in food service. And it actually shows you what determination, hard work, and effort and talent will get you. But she's moved through several jobs and is now part of the administrative staff here in the Marketing and Communications Department. And we're just pleased as points to have Adrian here, and Adrian, if you could stand up, we'd like to welcome you and congratulate you.
Thank you, Mr. Taylor, and congratulations. Madam Treasurer?
Mr. Alec?
Aye.
Ms. Karstafen?
Aye.
Mr. Bax?
Yes.
Mr. Gebhardt?
Aye.
And Mr. Brubaker?
Aye, motion carried. Dr. Jama, Superintendent Report?
Absolutely. I don't have a lot of items for Superintendent Reports tonight, again, I just want to thank our crowd for coming again, and Shayla, is Ms. Mudd still in the, this, but I do want to thank you for your address of the Board of Education earlier, your sentiments and your information presented to the Board of Education and to myself and to my team is something that we take very seriously. I wanna apologize to London, if he has gone through some tough times, but I could assure you, as we spoke on the phone yesterday, those issues will be addressed, and there will be plans put in place to, if needed, to stop them in the future. So, again, thank you for your presentation tonight, and again, by working together, and that's what I thank you for, bringing it to my attention and bringing it to the attention. We can't do anything if we don't know. And tonight, you, and over the past couple of years that you and I've known each other, you've always addressed, and we're honest and upfront, and I thank you for that. Thank you. That's all I, oh, I'm sorry, Brian. This is like the important piece.
Thank you, Dr. Jama. Talking about robotics again, our, one of our Elyria High School teams, we have three, so our R team, they're all called 11124, and then they have a letter, the, this particular team, the R team, they qualified for Worlds, which is a really high honor. Out of 15,000 VEX Robotics teams at the high school level worldwide, they were ranked 87th as far as their official season performance, so...
I don't wanna interrupt, you say that again, though, ranked in the what?
87th in the world.
Say that a little louder.
How many 15,000?
87th in the world. And so, they're heading down to Louisville, Kentucky, where it really is Worlds, I know people have a hard time believing that sometimes, but there will be over 50 countries represented there, a lot from China, Ireland, Australia, South America, Europe, and they'll be competing against over 450 teams, it's a four-day event. The finals are actually broadcast, last year it was on CBS. So, it's a pretty big deal, they're in, I think it's called the Yum-Yum, no, it was last year, is it, they're at the Kentucky Conventions that are in Louisville. So, we're fortunate that it's a drivable thing for us, that we're not flying in from, say, China to have to attend the event, but, you know, I know they appreciate your support and everything that you do for them as well.
How many kids are on the team?
There are five to six teams that participate on the team. Various roles, driver, engineer, mechanic, programmer.
And is, are you taking Mr. Bax with you?
You know, I'm not sure actually who's listed as a chaperone yet, so...
Wow, I guess you don't...
That was a reaction.
Where is IIT Director when you need him? Oh, he's talking.
It sounded like the Oscar music, but...
Your time's up.
That was the five-minute limit rule.
Brian, what are they ranked?
87.
87th in the world.
Okay. I wanna thank the administration and the cabinet for finding a way to fund this, because one of the parents, Mr. Martin's mother, works for me, and she was concerned about, were they gonna do fundraisers to fund this, so I appreciate Dr. Jama and you and your team to find a way to fund these young people so they can represent Elyria, so thank you.
Okay, good job, Brian.
Thank you, Brian.
Very good.
Dr. Jama, anything else?
That's it.
Board member discussion, board members, no, that's coming, it's not yet. The next item then will be board policies and regulations, second reading and adoption, to approve the second reading and adoption of the following board policy and regulations, procurement and use of naloxone, Narcan in an emergency. Can I have a motion to approve? So moved. Moved by Mr. Gebhardt, do I have a second?
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Bax, any discussion? Madam Treasurer?
Mr. Gebhardt?
Aye.
Mr. Bax?
Yes.
Ms. Karstafen?
Aye.
Mr. Alec?
Aye.
And Mr. Brubaker?
Aye, motion carried. We do have another item on the agenda before we recess to executive session. Madam Vice President?
We have a motion, a resolution approving a real property tax exemption in connection with the proposed redevelopment of the property located at 7900 West Ridge Road in the city of Elyria.
Do I have a motion to approve? So moved. Do I have a second?
Second.
Moved in second, do we have any discussion? Madam Treasurer?
Mr. Alec?
Aye.
Mr. Bax?